All right, my watch says seven o'clock, it's like certain times, so we're cool. Welcome to the city council work session tonight, August ninth, twenty twenty-two. Welcome to the audience and welcome council and staff, appreciate everyone that's been able to join us. Those who come soon, I am going to have an opening ceremony. We'll have a pledge with me. Repeat your pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people who stand in the nation's shadow of God and the visible liberty of justice.
Father, you're very grateful for all my many blessings, grateful to be able to live in the city of Harrisville, grateful for the beautiful surroundings we have, grateful for the many people who work here and are concerned and want the best. And we ask that you please be with us tonight as we discuss that Harrisville City helps us to be conscious of the needs, helps us to be wise at our decision-making and watch over all of us. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. All right, well, this work session was brought about because you as councilor wanted it. So what I have done is I'm going to have Jenny do an opening statement. And we have some presentations that we can have from police department and Brian if you're wanting to. But we'll start with Jenny, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I've just prepared kind of a brief review over what has taken place over the last year within the city. And over the last fiscal year, we have conducted a wage study to address the turnover in staffing, which was subsequently adopted in December of two thousand and twenty-one. During this time, the city has hired new employees in the following administrative positions, the justice court, city treasurer, finance director, city recorder, and transitioned from a part-time administrator to a full-time administrator. The police department has lost four officers and the public works department has hired four new employees because we were down two employees in that department the year prior. In January of two thousand and twenty-two, we sold the public works building to align a road connection for the Dixon Creek subdivision on Washington Boulevard, which triggered a serious discussion on where and how to address the growth the city has been and is experiencing. In April, we assessed our options with bonding for the public works building and potentially the city hall, the police department, and a recreation facility. In May of two thousand and twenty-two, we adopted a parameters resolution authorizing the bonding of up to fifteen million dollars for these facilities. And the end of June of two thousand and twenty-two, we issued six million dollars of twenty-year sales and franchise municipal bonds to build the public works facility, the building. The city has subsequently completed the RFP process and is meeting regularly with the awarded architectural firm who is designing the new public works building for us. The city is actually experiencing the growth of eighteen proposed developments, not the nine previously mentioned before, as we assessed our development projects that we have going on. In May of two thousand and twenty-two, when the tentative budget was adopted, the city had not yet completed the bonding process. So therefore, the increase to the certified tax rate at that time was based on the projection to balance the budget at that time. But with the issuance of the bonds and the proposed certified tax rate was increased to the one hundred sixty-six percent from the zero point zero 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 five six four rate that would have been set if we were not going through the truth and taxation process. So what that does is it brings up the proposed certified tax rate to the zero point zero zero one five zero zero to balance the budget and address the increasing needs of the city and to retain and stabilize our current existing staff. So I'd like to review some of the PowerPoint that we went over last week. And if that might be helpful for you, let me share my screen here. And we'll just go over these slides. And if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to review them in more detail regarding how does the city receive more revenue with the property values going up? I've done a bit of math today to see how that impacts residents directly with their property values going up. And the certified tax rate from last year was around six percent of people's taxes, total, the total of people's taxes. And this year, with the increase to the proposed certified tax rate, that would increase it to thirteen percent that Harrisville would be collecting of those total taxes. So although the property values of homes went up, our certified tax rate actually decreased from the two thousand and twenty-one to the proposed two thousand and twenty-two without the certified tax rate. So once again, this is a review of where we were in two thousand and thirteen and where we are up to the two thousand and twenty-two timeline with the certified tax rate decreasing each year and the total revenue received pretty much within a fifty thousand dollar range. As it stands, the city budget is, seven percent of the city's budget is property tax received, revenue received for that. The proposed rate that we are considering would put us about mid-range of our surrounding and other cities in Weber County. How the city has addressed this deficit, the ongoing deficit of the city is mainly been the CARES Act and ARPA funding has allowed us to. I think you're all aware, as well as staff, that we've been anticipating these large projects and growth to come through that would help balance the budget. But as we've experienced the last two or three years, those projects have been delayed and going through a number of changes themselves. And those funds have not come in the way that the city anticipated them. The new facilities that are needed or why is this revenue needed? These are all of the outlined things that staff came up with. And mainly, I'd like to add tonight, I didn't update the slide, but our retention of our employees is a significant concern as we're already having to address that, even with our wage study last year. And I know some of the other department heads are ready to address that as well. So what will these proceeds cover? Will we anticipate it covering the staffing needs? Each department has increased their staff by one full-time employee. The unfunded mandates that the state is requiring us to meet. And our facilities, the lack of the standards of our current facilities, the environmental issues that we're facing and the BCI requirements. The city has outgrown our facility. We anticipate our growth just going up, not decreasing. And I think it is important to note that the initial costs of the developments are paid, but the long-term services provided to all of our residents, once they come in, although they do pay property tax, if that certified tax rate is decreasing due to the growth, then we don't capture that money. These are things the city has already done and in the process of, among other things that weren't listed on this slide, the public works budget has really been realigned to take a lot of the burden off of the general fund already with utility fees. We've done the waste management audit. We have conducted studies for impact fees and are continuing to do those studies. We've assessed the fee schedules. One of the fee schedules I didn't add in here was the cabin in the park. That fee schedule recently. And we do need to put out RFPs to address the additional studies that are needed for business licensing and building fees. We've kind of reviewed this and talked about that at the beginning, opening statement. I won't go over much more of that. I did prepare one other slide that I apparently didn't, let me pull it up really quick. I think it's, it will show the certified tax rate balance from last year to this year. My apologies, it's not on here. Let me go to my notes. So I did an assessment from the, well Jill, as you know, our city treasurer created a calculator for residents to be able to assess how this proposed tax increase will affect them. And part of that calculation shows the difference that people would be paying, residents would be paying from the two thousand and twenty-one year to the two thousand and twenty-two year. So although several entities are going through truth and taxation, ourselves included, some of them are not, and their certified tax rates will drop. And the overall difference between the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two for all encompassing Weber County property tax is point zero 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 two four five. So the, there are a lot of changes being adopted in certain entities, but there are some that aren't. And so from what they're paying last year to what they'll be paying this year, that's the percentage of change in their property tax that they'll be paying the difference in. I also did an assessment on the, on evaluation for a home. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what I just captured. And if the certified tax rate were to stay at the proposed point zero zero one five, the annual payment for Harrisville would be seven thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars, a monthly payment of six hundred seven dollars approximately. If it were reduced to a hundred percent, that would go from seven thousand fifty-seven dollars, five hundred eighty-eight dollars a month, which is a difference of eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And I assessed kind of a higher home value, so you could get a feel for where that would fit as far as the actual dollar amount difference. So having said that, I know there are other items that you might be interested in reviewing. We have prepared a staff, the entire budget with notes on each line item of why there were increased, where they're going to, the things that they're capturing to pay for. And I also know that our police chief has prepared a presentation about the effect to the police department.
Are you ready to have him?
Sure, I will screen share and if you want to narrate it, Mark.
Yes. So she gets this PowerPoint and these are all points. So any questions or anything else would be straight to go through this. This is kind of just in participation, so you guys understand what the police department's been going through for the last few years. So as far as our budget, the biggest line items here are like salaries and wages. It's the biggest part is employees. When we figure that into this budget, there is no room for any change. There's no merit raises, there's no, there's no way to, when we lose someone, there's no way to hire someone else. Like if we were to get an experienced person to apply, there's no money in this budget to pay for that. So we constantly have to look for a new employee, a new officer that we're going to train, which later in this, it'll tell us exactly how much it costs to even get an officer from the higher stage to work his first day on his own. I can't see part of this, but during the last twelve months, we've lost four officers from here. All of them are leaving for neighboring agencies for higher wages. None of these guys are leaving with a bad taste and they're not for the city. They're not leaving because they don't like to work here. They're leaving here because they can get paid so much more somewhere else. There we go. So the cost to replace the officer, just to get them to work his first day, is six thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. That's not including, sixteen thousand, yeah, sixteen thousand. That's not including our FTOs salaries to train that person. That's just what it costs for that officer. Officer one, number one, left last July, have nineteen years of experience. He had three years here. He went for a two-dollar hour raise and you can see he gets a three percent raise every six months for the next three years. And just to kind of preface that, there are a lot of agencies out there right now that have decided that they're going to pay top dollar for their officers. By doing that, agencies like us hire these new officers. We put them to the test, we prove that they're worth it. And then these other agencies, they get to go snipe all the other. I mean, it's like a pro team scouting for their players. They go take the best of the best. And we're left with always this extreme pattern of what we're going to do tomorrow for cover shifts. The state, seven or eight years ago, I believe, is that correct Max? About seven or eight years ago, they changed the, they changed the benefits for officers, the retirement, which now has created this need for officers. People don't want to be cops anymore because of what the state has done. And now with the last two years, you have all the negative news that surrounds first responders. So that's cut into this too. So officers are hard to find right now. They are extremely difficult to find. We have a posting on our website all the time and we maybe get one application in a couple of months and half of those are not even viable. They're, they don't even rise to background investigation. But so at the bottom here, if we were to pay these officers what they're leaving for, that would be an increase of eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars to the budget. That includes benefits, that's just not wages, that includes benefits, everything. So when you're spending six thousand dollars to continually train guys that are leaving, that's half out of that.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah, sixteen thousand, sorry. So the third officer, now with five years, also got a substantial raise with some undisclosed benefits. Again, the three dollar raise to keep that officer would have been eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two. And if you look here at the extra training that this since he was here for five, five years, how many extra hours of training he has? Twenty-five thousand dollars is a very conservative estimate of what we spent in trading for them. The last class that we sent them to cost us forty-three hundred dollars. That was arrest control. He never had a class in this city. So we're preparing all these guys for other agencies continually. And officer number four was here for a year and a half. He got a three dollar and twenty-five cent raise. That three dollar and twenty-five cent raise is after I tried to offer him an extra dollar. And he still left, he four thousand dollar sign on bonus. So he was, we hired him brand new. So all the training hours, we're looking around eighteen thousand dollars is conservative with what we spent on him in a year and a half. Officer five, this is a potential one. He's got an application and he's looking to, looking to find some balance as well. We've put some, quite a bit of training into him. He's been into alert training. Alert training is what we use to train for school shooters. He's been trained for an instructor for that. We haven't had, he'll have a class on that yet and we may lose him. He's also our rifle instructor. And he's a field training officer. And he's slated to go to a rifle armor class. He would have gone up, was out of town. So we're spending a ton of money on these people to make them better officers so we can sell them their innocence and their rights. And this is the part-time budget. That kind of covers just the salaries and wages, I'm sorry if I skipped over that. But there was no initial change to this budget that within the last few weeks, as everybody knows, we're going through the accreditation process. And it's kind of hit or miss because every time we're going to start working on it, we lose someone and then it's back to panic mode. So having said that, as we're looking through this, and at this point, I am our evidence historian and the assistant chief is the backup. We've been told that this is a major liability. So we would like to propose a part-time person, maybe two shifts a week, four-hour shifts, eight hours a week, to maybe come in and do evidence for us. We've thought about passing this on to the sergeants, but as you go through, and if you can, take a chance to talk to some of the employees and ask them how many different hats they wear as, as they do their jobs. Not one of the people in the police department just does one thing. We're all responsible for a lot of things. A normal sergeant in other departments are a sergeant, they're a supervisor. We are working sergeants here. So if people are on vacation, people are on training, those sergeants are covering the shifts. So our SRO also covers shifts during the day. So he's got two jobs. Most of these officers are trainers, they're all film. We, we expect even our new officers, looking their first year, to find something to instruct for this department so we can save money in training. So this is why we spend so much money on training. We want good officers here to take care of our, our citizens. Having said that, with the way things are right now, without experienced officers, we're looking for problems, we're looking for, for young rookie mistakes that may cause lawsuits. So that's another reason why this rotating doors is just, it's not working. As far as the new part-time person, I've tried to figure it out and be as close as possible. And the cost of that would be right around ten thousand for the year with our part-time budget and our ability. Now, we only have two part-time officers right now, so it's difficult as well. So I'm looking at maybe a six thousand dollar increase to that one with, with bringing on that other part-time employee, which wouldn't be the whole ten thousand. Over time and holiday, this is, there's, you can't really change this. This is just budgeted for our new officer and the pay increases from last time. Again, this is the benefit, same thing. CSI, they did increase this, and if I can remember, it's over a thousand dollars that they increased on this nine hour for us this year. Thousand fifty-four. Travel and train, this one has an increase through a new employee. As everybody knows, last year, Utah passed a law that requires us to have sixteen hours of special training now to include arrest control, autism. Then I'll help. There's, there's one more. We're sending guys like ES, yes. So we, as Harrisville, have instructors for each one of these right now. Our goal was to have the two instructors for arrest control. Obviously, we've lost one. It's hard for one, one instructor to teach the whole class. So we're going to have to send another officer to that when it comes available again. Well, the other increase would be for the BCI cat conference. That's a mandatory training. If someone from the agency doesn't go, we will no longer have access to that. That's Bureau of Criminal Identification. So that's where we run all our, where it is all warrants, all that stuff. We can't deal without that. And the last few years, it's been virtual because of COVID and hasn't had the cost that's come with it. So we're going to have to raise with that now.
The acronym of tactical support. Terminal area coordinator. There's usually one in the court, one in the PD.
We actually have, so we have a court staff, a police staff, which I'm the police one. We have the court. And then our admin assistant for the police is the, is the backup for both. This is vehicle maintenance. The only increase to that is to increase for an extra patrol vehicle. Order pool payments, this one has actually decreased a little bit. Typically, we order two vehicles a year and we sell two vehicles a year. This year, we had to add a patrol vehicle, we're still only buying two, and I'm going to keep my car for another year. So we've tried to, tried to save some money there, which is approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars, I think. Fuel, obviously, fuel is on up. Even the cost that we calculated for this budget, it's not going to cut it. Since we've calculated this, it keeps going up. So plus it has the extra patrol vehicle added. So I doubt that this is going to be, I don't think we'll reach this budget by now. Supplies and expenses, again, this, the only increase to this one this year was the office supplies used to be paid for out of the administrative budget for the office. We've since stripped that out and now all the departments are paying for their own office. It's used to get paid through that, so that's what the increase there is. Marine service. It says specialty forms on here. This doesn't even pay for our business cards. I've quit buying officers' business cards until they are off probation once a year now because I'm sick of buying them and they're not, they're expensive. So that's the increase to this. Usually our forms come out of the, at the office supply and expensive line items. You know, for that, that increases due to just our new officer. And there's a little bit in there for part-time budget. Our part-time guys don't make a lot of money here. They don't work a lot of shifts. Ammunition, obviously, bullets have gone up, they're hard to get. All our Taser cartridges are starting to expire, so we're going to have to buy new Taser cartridges this year. Memberships, this is just a small increase for the additional officer. This is a membership for the Texas Police Association in Region fourteen. Region fourteen is something that we pay into, the whole, the whole county pays into this. And Region fourteen picks that money and provides training at a lower cost for everyone that that puts into the funds. So they pay for it and we get, we get to try to buy it and get seats. And this is just an increase through the additional officer, the air carters, what we use for the computers to work while they're on the streets. So it's, that's a must-have. Equipment, again, we've increased this for the additional officer. You're going to see a big amount, which includes that sixty-five hundred dollars. The only reason that's on here is because when the money collected from the old firearms has to go into the general fund. But that money was slated to be used to purchase the sights, the lights, and the holsters for the new guns. So it's been put into this budget and it'll go back into the general fund, so we'll be able So it's been put into this budget and it'll go back into the general fund. So we'll be a wash as far as the sixty five hundred dollars goes. Computers. We've added, a big part of this was for watch guard maintenance. Watch guard main, watch guard is our camera system. Since Motorola has taken over watch guard or purchased watch guard, they've come up with a whole different bunch of it. If we don't pay for this minority, if something goes wrong with our system, they won't help us. So if something happens, all that's going to venture, we have to have it. There's no way not to pay for that. That's the four thousand dollar cost. The last two years, that's been paid out of their tax funds.
Which is a grant.
Yeah. So that comes from the state, yes. Um, body armor, again, it's the revolving door. Fourteen hundred dollars is what we paid for our vest and the carrier now. So you can't reissue these. Every time you hire an officer, they they're here for a year and a half. They have a five year shelf life. So every five years, we have to replace these. Last year, we doubled the budget. We 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 spent. When I believe two hundred percent of that budget. Uh, this is a a new line item and I believe it's was added a thousand dollars. This was kind of a discussion to be used. If I decided to come out on a holiday, these guys that are working, I could buy lunch for these guys to have to show appreciation from the city. If we're on a critical placement and water or food needs to be brought because officers are there all day, all night. That's, that's the kind of things that decisions for. That kind of sums up. My budget line item. So if there's any questions or anything else I'd like to talk about. I mean, there's, we can go online with. So if there's something you don't understand, or something you'd like to know, I think the public would like to know.
Ma'am, this is not a public hearing. Thank you. Uh, are you done?
I'm done, yes. Yes. If there's any questions, I'll be, I'll be there.
So if I understand what you're buying, as much as we were doing well, the taxation, increased taxes. There's no guarantee these officers will stay. So we gotta figure out how should try to keep them.
Here's the problem with this. Um, as as Jenny brought up, when she did, we did our wage study in December of twenty one.
Sure.
Um, it's a year old. So I can tell you. Right now, the Riverdale and South Park do a wage study every year. They vowed to keep their wages up with Salt Lake and everybody else. So if they don't run into this, they don't wanna lose officer. It costs money to lose officer.
Sure.
So they pledged to do these wage studies and and soon as we got down with our wage study in twenty one, everybody. It was a madhouse. Everybody was calling us wanting to know what we did. It's it's ridiculous. But the lack of officers is is pushed us to this supply and demand when it comes down to it. There's, there's no other way to say that. The the longer we deal with this, the further we get behind it. This year, our budget's slated for a three percent cost of living increase. All the cities around us are at least seven percent. Often city employees, I believe, about thirteen to or fifteen percent. Increase besides the police department due to the police department gets a five dollar raise across the board, they got seven. So and then merit raises, the cities never done a merit raise for any employee as long as I think here. I don't know if. If they've had it before that, but this is where we did get behind. Um, we can fix things. But if we don't stay on top of it. We we fall behind the next year. It's, this is something that has to be looked at each year. And and decided on as a council, but yeah, it this requires maintenance.
So in maintenance things, looking further down the road. You know, in my mind, this is just group of homes. We're gonna have to go through the taxation every year. Will that compensate what we need to do or do we have to do something more?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question. Without, without the figures there, I mean, yes, the budget's gonna increase every year. That's.
Yeah, we're still falling behind according to what you just said.
Absolutely. You've got, you've got officers in in neighboring agencies that are thirty dollars plus an hour. Um, our supervisor is thirty dollars. And they're being shocked. Every time we send these guys to a training, these departments are shopping our guys. We're sending our best out to get trained. We're sending our best out to leadership classes and then come back, oh, so and so offered me a job. Which I think is unprofessional, but it's part of, part of the deal.
When you use the word sniper, this is where it's used.
Yes, absolutely. They can sit back and watch whatever officer. When it gets around, they know what officers are good, what they know what officers look productive and those are the ones they go after. They avoid the problems, they avoid, I mean, we've sent several people or hired several people in the last few years that. They've not made it off the FTO program, which is the sixteen thousand dollars. So it was a complete wash because. Can only do a background, you can't predict the future. So these guys have bypassed that and they don't do it to the training. They. Hire assistant officers. Another thing to look at would be um higher than laterals and I've learned Weaver County has um. When they do their interviews, I apparently they have a a citizen review board that goes over experience and years and. And what kind of training and that's where that wage comes from, what you're gonna pay that officer for his experience. So that may be something to look at as well.
So within this three hundred and twenty seven, three hundred thousand dollars in property tax, most of it's going to basically maintain. Salaries, budgets. Taking care of employees.
Well, that's not, I don't know where all of it goes though. I apologize. Jenny be a better person.
Be a shocking question, but the things that you've talked about here is taking care of the needs for.
Well, when you, yeah, when you look at salaries, the wages are a big part of our budget. Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're, you're absolutely correct.
And that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
No, I appreciate it. This is what I would like as a discussion.
That's fun. I agree.
Yeah, the question probably comes up, uh, have we looked to integrate and share services with. The other agencies like form a tri-city police department, like we have a tri-city fire department. Which would entail uh standing up a special service district or contract with the sheriff's office. As some of the cities out here do. Uh, we've looked into both of those substantially. I'll address the first one. Just prior to my retirement, Mayor Tate, myself, the mayor in chief of North Doggett. The mayor in chief, Pleasant, we sat down and discussed the option of standing up a special service district. For law enforcement, like we have uh with our fire district. Like you say, our, our property tax is only about three hundred twenty five thousand dollars. The majority of our revenues come from sales tax.
About three fifty.
Right, three fifty now. I think it was three and a quarter then, three years ago. On the flip side, Pleasant View, on the other hand, most of their revenues come from their property taxes. North Doggett and Fire Department corrected fifty fifty. The problem with standing up a special service district is. All of it has to be funded by property tax. And so we crunched the numbers on that. If it had worked for those other two cities, we would have had up just, just for. Police services alone, three hundred percent. Three hundred percent to to, so if we come up with enough to sustain a tri- tri-county or tri-city district or law. So that was a, was out. We've uh, over the years, last twenty five years, we've probably. Talked to the sheriff, the sheriffs talked to us about more times. The last meeting we had with them. They basically said, you'll have to give up all your equipment to us. All the stuff Mark was talking about, um, vehicles, radios, everything. Would have to go to the sheriff's office and they would take care of the command staff for three, maybe four. And they would charge us on a basis of a little over one point or one officer per thousand population. Uh, if, uh, and I think it's probably up to now about a hundred fifty thousand per FPD. And if you look at that, uh, we need ten deputies. So that's gonna be one point five million dollars, which is more than the budget is now. And uh, our current sheriff's an awesome guy. I'm sure that they do a good job. What if we get one that isn't so much. For or the response time, I guarantee would decrease because they'd be working a precinct out through here. And uh, we're right, we're proud of our response time, two to four minutes. Uh, that has saved lives in the past. Um, and so, and if we decided we didn't like what was happening and, oh, we wanna stand our own police department back up. Guess what? We can't. It costs too much to do. So, uh, we got the small, the, I think we've got the smallest police, city police department in Weaver County. But down from down, but I think we've always been the best. And uh, this isn't something that's happening to Chief Wilson. It it's started happening, I'd say, twelve, fifteen years ago. A city to the north offered six dollars an hour. Take one of our best in finance and this has been going on ever since. So when you're, when asked if it's been looked into as far as service district, sheriff's office. And that's another thing, when you give your local control up to a higher level of. Uh, in the county government and an elected official, we lose that local control. Uh, so. I could never justify it. And I, and I come from. Kind of chief of police and an elected sheriff, I can argue the pros and cons both ways, but. The cons far outweigh the pros when it comes to that kind of policing for our, our city.
I did miss a couple of slides here and some of that will play into what. That's what Jackson was just talking about too, so.
Want to go ahead?
Yeah, we can. Anyhow, we refigured, we, we talked, um, oh, there we go. The last time we did our um salary study back in the, we've redone the call, call volume and stuff. For this, the previous one was, this is a six month period of what our officers handle per call or. Calls per officer. It used to be six ninety one, I believe, is now not a seven hundred and three calls per officer. Um, cousin view is just a little bit ahead of us on that now. They weren't behind us before. But if you look at Auburn City, their, their officers are handling four hundred and forty seven calls per officer. So this just tells you how efficient the guys that work here are and what they expect out of them. If you move over the crime rate. If you, and these are the, the latest figures, they're from twenty twenty. Um, the crime rate per one thousand, Harrisville is number one at fifty two point two one percent. If you figure the crime rate per one thousand residents. If you figure just the part one crimes. Were at three sixty seven, last study we gave, we were at number three, we're now number four. So we've gone a little bit on that, but the, the crime rate per one thousand should, should spare you. In the highest, this is the highest in Weaver County.
And that's, that's not to say it's, it's a heavily crime area, but one of those part one crimes is theft. And when you have a service district or a, a business district as large as we have. Our city size here on the south end of town, those steps are gonna go up and that's gonna reflect on the crime attempt.
And the, the fifty two point two one, that's all crime. That's not just, right, that's just not key one crimes. So. I mean, the guys we have, we try to save money. We do a good job for the citizens. But it costs money to keep us and if we were to go to the county, you'd see that. Your, your response time, all that stuff would be, would go down. So I didn't talk about all this. I just wanted to make sure we, well, there's a few things. I mean, um. When we're running low on officers, they're obviously able to work. We get overtime, it's costing more money there. It's, it's pretty difficult to. Give you guys a number on what it costs, but. Police depend on that camaraderie. They depend on that teamwork. You've gotta trust that guy that's out there with you. And when you're losing guys and you're always having new people, that's hard to achieve. I can remember that the members, we went from last year to having ninety five years of experience in this department. We were at seventy five and keep in mind, we got lucky and picked up two retired officers this year with twenty years of experience. But they just wanna come and work. Money's not an issue to those guys. One of those guys will be leaving next July. So. And then if you've noticed that when you go through and you see these guys, they're, they have not been here that long. You know, you're looking at one to seven years, this, that's how long they stay. If you look at the history of this department and we were looking at today, since I've been here, I think we've had four retirements. One of them was Chief Jackson, one of them was Lieutenant Wright, we had Sergeant Rowley and. Will Wright. So I, so I apologize. It's been three. If, if I stay my whole, whole career, I will be the only one that's started here and retired. So this is not just a big problem. This is something that we've been dealing with for a long time.
So what resources do you try to hold there? You say that we enable to get some part time people that are. Experienced officers, therefore you say plenty of training because we're already trained. But is there any other resources that kind of like raised your old, that you try to pull up?
There's, there's really no place in the holes anymore. It's, it's so competitive nowadays. This is a whole different market. In the last seven to eight years, you used to get tons of applications. People you just have to go test. Now you're lucky if you get a couple of applications for your jobs. These, everybody wants to go to Salt Lake. Everybody wants to go where the money is.
Silver. The whole system, state police system is hammered right now. Uh, nobody wants to do it. So what's happening is. We're cannibalizing when it's, we're doing incentives, we're doing a pay, we're doing this and that and. We're getting run out compared to the others.
We really have one of these problems and unfortunately it's an expensive problem. The, the culture's here. People like to work here. We treat people good. The city's always treated the police good and you can see that by the workers, turned out by employees across the whole. The whole city, not just, not just the police department. I don't think you'll go and find another city where. The public works gets along with the officers. Everybody knows everybody. This is a very personal city. People like to work here. They like to stay. They just need to get paid to stay.
Could you tell me now that when you're losing this officer at twenty five dollars an hour, to replace them, what do you want to do? Because you have somebody else that comes in with more experience and they want more wages. You don't have that budget.
I hope you'd have to pass on somebody if somebody wanted to work. Or over extended.
Or that person retired. It's okay.
I mean, and it should be noted, last year we did a pay raise and a lot of that stuff wasn't, didn't really come out of the general. What, come out of the general fund. We were down three offices at a time. We saved quite a bit of money because. We were covering, I was covering shifts. I worked the morning shift. So some of that was absorbed then. We. You know, we can't, we can't continue to, the work wasn't done when we're covering shifts. It's. The accreditation process with these new legislation, it's mandatory that officer or that departments are doing this and. We've been trying to do it for two and a half years.
Explain one other thing for me, just a side question. We help supply an officer.
I'm sorry.
We have an officer that's in, at our junior high schools.
Yes. So they, he's a full-time officer now, yes, the, the school does pay part of his salary. I don't have that number.
And that's fine, I'm not asking for that.
I can remember, right, I had a guess that's somewhere in the neighborhood of I want to say forty.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
So he's, he's full-time there at the junior high and during the summer time?
He is the patrol car also during the day. So he is.
Okay, Mark, do you have any other questions? Cause I can remember going on, if we have more questions, we'll come back. Is that okay, Mark? Brian?
Okay, is that all? Yeah. So I have a presentation, I don't, I don't run into the, near the problems like the police department does as far as turnover a little bit, but I do have, if, if you have specific questions about my budget, if you can have a review of it, or I can just go through it by an item. Briefed in these explanations, what would you like?
Mayor? Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let me, let me ask you a question. I understand and I'm seeing that it's important that if, if the council wants to see this line item. But I wanna ask you a question. When you meet with these, with these department chairman, are you satisfied with the budgets they are bringing in to you? And are they reasonable and the things that they are asking for and needing? You can agree with? Is that something that you can say yes to?
Yes, and let me give you a little bit of history that way. I think we have evolved in how we've, we've done the budget. When my first year as mayor, I met with the police department, they came in and said, here's our budget. And we automatically said, okay, what could we cut? Because that's how we had always done it. And as we were doing this, I thought, how ridiculous is this? Because if they bring me a budget, I'm insulting to them. I'm insulting them by saying, well, what can we cut? Because you brought me a budget, why don't I trust what you say is right? So working through them and the department heads through the last, well, this is the first year that we're doing that. We have created that culture where, yes, I do trust them. And every year they bring me the things that they need and not once has anybody got over their budget in their department. They actually save in places they can, they, I, I trust them, we go over the things that they need. They don't overspend. We were accused by one person last week of saying the staff loves a big budget because they can spend, spend, spend. They don't do that. They have that budget and if it's in that budget, they're allowed to spend it. If they don't, they use coupons. They use other ways, we, we try and get grants. It, it comes down to how can we extend their budgets? Not how can we spend their budgets? So yeah, I am, I am satisfied with it. We start working on this, when did we start? In January? Working on their budgets to, to make sure that we had everything in there. We've gone over it as department heads. We've gone over to Jessica and Jill, everyone's looked at this, you've had an opportunity to look at it. I, I believe them and I know they don't just spend.
Okay, so guy, gentlemen, my, my opinion, as I've been thinking about this, and trust me, I've had a lot of time this, this last week to think about this. That's the mayor's job and that's the department head's job. And so for to sit here and to listen to him go line item by line item, I don't need that. I trust them. That's their job. We've never gone, we've never had budgets go out of sight, nothing like that. So I think what we need to do is ask the big question that's in the room right now. And it's, and, and it, and I can ask this to Jenny and to the mayor. If we stay at the rate that you're asking, will we be able to keep the city floating? And staying above board and above, you know, the red line? Is, or if, is there a possibility that we can go down? If we can't go down and we're gonna hurt the city? Is that something that will happen if we drop that tax rate?
Yes, to answer your question, if we drop it from the point zero zero one five zero zero, that is the proposed rate. That will create a deficit in the budget. And can we anticipate other revenues that may be available within the next year? We can hope that those revenues come in, for example, building permit fees or other revenue sources, maybe a little higher with the sales tax or, or franchise fees, things like that. But by not adopting the proposed rate would automatically create a deficit in the city budget, yes.
Okay, so, so this is, that answers my question on what I, what I've been wrestling with. Because we cannot put ourselves in a situation to be in a deficit. We do not know what these buildings situations are gonna happen and we cannot rely on that. And after going through and doing the math on the tax increase, yeah, it was scary. And everybody, if you step back and listen and, and think about what we heard that night, everybody was panicking because it went up four, five, six, seven hundred dollars. Yes, everybody's did, but if you look with the cities, we're talking just the city. If it was a very small percentage of it. And yes, I know people are upset, but the thing you have to look at, and I have been looking at it and thinking about it, is that what we're asking to keep the city from being in a deficit is a very small percentage. I don't need to listen to any more about the line item or what they're doing, because the mayor's told me that she is satisfied with that. Jenny is probably satisfied with what they do and the budgets they propose. So now that my question is, you know, we have to make a decision, each one of us. Are we gonna put the city in a, in a deficit? Are we gonna run chances of losing more employees? And then we are really gonna be in trouble? Or do we have to make that hard decision which people elected us for? To keep the city working the way it is? And, you know, it's something, like I said, we all have to figure out by next week. But that's the question you've answered for me tonight, is that this is where we are. And as far as I'm concerned, like I said, the mayor and the, and the department chairmans, or lead, the department chairs. They're, they've done their job and that's their job. And now we have to make the hard decision. So that's where I'm standing at it right now.
Thank you. And I, I kinda have to give you some background on our thought process to get to this point. In the last three years, you know, COVID hit, we, we shut down. We were one of the only cities that shut down for about six weeks, otherwise we had people here working. We had people at home working. We kept functioning as a city. We were fortunate enough to have the CARES Act money. We've been told that we kept it in the city. And we used that in the city to, to put off how they could do this three years ago. So when people are saying, why do you do this three years ago? We anticipated that we wouldn't have to do this at all if we can use the CARES Act money and then use the the, the thought of, well, and the thought that we would have more growth coming in. And, and then we wouldn't have to do this. It, you know, life doesn't always plan. So we found ourselves, unfortunately, but we don't have any more CARES Act money. We, we can't extend that. So we literally saved people money over the last three years by doing this. And now we have to do this. And we have extended ourselves to the point where it's a lot. And that's what it is.
I, I also think that it, it's something that we have to look at into the future too. This isn't something that it's gonna go away. This is something that is happening in every city. I mean, I have a brother-in-law who lives in North Ogden, he got his tax notice. It just went up eight hundred plus dollars. Every city is experiencing this. But the thing that we have an advantage of right now is we can do this and keep our city out of debt. And we, we know that we need to build, we know we need the new building. That's a given. And I think the police department and public works and parks are all running as tight a budget as they can possibly run and the city offices. But again, my opinion is, I think you've answered my question. It was the one question I've had for the last few weeks. And you've answered that for me and I appreciate it. It's something that it's, it's a hard decision. But there, I don't know, it's kinda like we, we, you know, we can go off a cliff or we can stay above it and not, and not go over the edge. So that's where I'm at. I'll keep listening, but I just wanted to bring that up. Like I said, it's been, it's been a real struggle for me to think about it. But with what was brought up tonight and the things that I've seen and the budget that I've looked at and everything, I'm satisfied. And now we have to just make that hard decision.
Thank you.
On the other side, there's Diane and I sit down and look at different percentages of what could happen. Understanding what we just talked about, what would happen if we lowered the tax rate and how would we make it up? Let's say we go back ninety thousand dollars, brought it under. And now I know that we're gonna have to make that ninety thousand dollars, that's been treated taxationary yet. And that's, I'm just being the advocate here and saying, I listened to a lot of people last week and I heard a lot of, a lot of concerns. And yes, a lot of man, man, extra voices, they all heard. And that's beside the point, yeah, the concern I have. So.
I'm not sure where, what, can I clarify your question?
What I'm clarifying is, is that if we did go to the full balance of the tax percentage, and we wanted to come down even just, I don't know, what is it? To come down ninety thousand dollars in, in a point zero zero, whatever it would be.
Jenny, I think maybe you've got some of those numbers that he's asking. So instead of like a hundred sixty-six percent, what if we get a hundred percent?
If you did a hundred percent, yes, that was in the slide presentation from last week. My apologies, my slides are a little out of order. So if I screen share here. This is where the certified tax rate would be if you decreased it to a one hundred percent increase. That's where it would be if it was a fifty percent increase. And this is the proposed. And to answer Steve's question further, not only would it create a deficit, I think it's important for us to be mindful that we have only bonded for the public works building so far. I know it's difficult for the public to understand or, or be on board with the, the growth the city's experiencing for the city hall and police department. But if we issue additional bonds, this, this proposed rate is just to cover the, the issued bonds. Not the proposed issuance of additional bonds.
Can I get a clarification? When I met with you the other day, I thought that the bond that was coming out of franchise taxes, not property taxes. Would you clarify that for me?
It is. So we did issue the sales and franchise tax bonds because we qualify under the to issue those bonds, we qualify by the collection. The intent of the city was to try to pay those outside of the sales and franchise tax. If you go to our budget, the revenue we receive from the sales and franchise tax is the majority of what we balance the general fund budget with. And so they were issued under that with the intention of us finding another revenue source to cover that, ideally impact fees from new development or, or the property tax. At the time that we adopted the tentative budget, we were, we hadn't issued those bonds yet. And so the rate was set even a little lower than the point zero zero one one two eight to balance the budget. And then when we modified that further to make sure that we had captured all of the anticipated expenditures for this next fiscal year, it raised it slightly. And then when we added the bond that we issued the end of June is where it landed at the point zero zero one five.
So it's part of the property tax now?
I'm sorry.
Are we taking part of the property taxes to pay the bond?
Yes, this would cover the bond payment with property tax, yes.
I didn't understand that. I thought it was franchise tax and what was the other?
That's yes, to clarify, that is what we pledged to bond.
So what you're saying is those could be used if we run into a problem with coming up with the, the property taxes. We could use that until that is no longer available.
Right. And being mindful that that is a large percentage of what the general fund is balanced from. And we don't, we don't control how many, how much revenue we receive from sales and franchise tax. That's kind of a moving target for us. It's based on how much people, our retail stores and how much franchise, and how many franchise agreements. Frankly, we need to renegotiate a lot of our franchise agreements. Some of them have expired and are outdated, but nonetheless, we are working through those, those processes. The property tax actually is the most solid way for us to know that we have the funds to cover those bonds.
Jenny, I'm not sure if you can help me with this, but can you somehow explain how sales tax is collected and distributed in our county? We don't get everything that comes from the businesses in our community. Can you explain that?
That is true. Several years ago, the, the state mandated that we have a state, a sales tax redistribution. And so our sales tax that we collect, for example, from Walmart, which is our law, large big box store, is redistributed to our surrounding cities within our county. So we don't capture the totality of the sales tax revenue that's distributed to cities. We are, we capture a percentage of that, but we have to redistribute some of that money to other cities. I, I, I can't speak to the justification for that. I suppose it had something to do with smaller cities not re, receiving anything because their residents shop at those locations. Again, that's just speculation on my part, but we, we do not capture all of the sales tax revenue that our businesses collect. It's also important to note, when people do online purchases, for example, Amazon, we need to be mindful of, we share a zip code with a lot of cities. If they are not listing Harrisville as the option, it is actually important for people to select that you're, you live in Harrisville, not Ogden or North Ogden, depending on your zip code. So that we are appropriated the, the right sales tax from those purchases as well. A lot of people don't, it just pre-fills as Ogden based on the zip code and they don't pay any attention to that. But it actually is really important that people pay attention to when you do online purchases, put the city that you live in because your sales tax is affected by that.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was wanting an explanation for.
So that's something we could do as well.
Just educate them that they need to make sure that they have a Harrisville city. Yes, anything you do, you need to fill out this, this Harrisville so that we get that credit.
Jenny, I have one other question. So with the impact fees that we are thinking of, we are probably not gonna see anything substantial this year, right?
Well, it's hard, obviously, that's a moving target. It's hard for us to, to, to guess. We have two developments that are on the verge of recording. One is the mixed-use Copperwoods development off two thousand North and seven fifty West. And then Montgomery Farms, which is the north section that was annexed into our city for development. So each of those developments are anticipated to start, begin. But some of our other developments, like Warren Hollow off of Larson Lane and Ashler Cove off of the highway and North Harrisville Road, they've been in process of development for over a year, both of them. And we, we do have building permits out in, in Warren Hollow. We don't Over a year, both of them, and we we do have building permits out in in Warren Hollow. We don't have building permits out in Ashler Cove. It's just a very fluid. Maybe Justin can actually chime in on this one too, on on how quickly. We anticipate seeing some of those impact fees come in.
Very much so, um. What we're looking at is when we set our budget, we kind of. Were optimistic in in about a hundred homes, a hundred new homes this year. Knowing Copperwoods would would be sixty five. And then Montgomery Farms would be about twenty. We were hoping that. You know, Warren Hollow would be would be a few and then Ashler Cove would be moving forward. Um we didn't assess anything from Ben Lowman. Because as we know, they've ran into some major problems and they're probably two years out before digging a basement. What I would like to add in is. Not only. Are we facing this deficit? But had I not come in and totally revamped the whole structure of the Public Works. There was about two hundred thousand dollars of general fund money. That was getting funneled into Public Works. To pay for things such as streetlights. Some other employee wages, all that. I've totally revamped all those and ha- set up their own departments. So now they're not coming out of general fund money. They're actually coming out of those department fund and utility monies. So. Not only are we. In a deficit with or without the the bond. But we'd actually be at a much greater deficit and looking at a tax increase of upwards of two hundred percent. Instead of the one sixty six.
You've answered my question in the sense that we're probably not going to see much money out of impact funds. So again, yeah, here's the question. It's, you know, it's the big question in the room. Are we? It'd be great to be able to come and say, I'd love to give you some back. I'd love to give myself some back. And I, you know, everybody on the council, I mean, everybody in the, you know, that works and lives in Harrisville, we all are going to be in the same boat. But I can't see us in good conscience. Putting ourselves in a death with deficit. I just, I I'm sorry, I can't see it. I've had my questions answered. I appreciate everything that's been brought up. But I I like I said, my my questions have been answered.
I'd just like to also maybe remind uh council how impact fee collection works to it. It does balance our revenue. But its expenditure is very limited. The city can only expend those funds on certain projects that we've app outlined in our. Capital facilities planner, our in our impact fee facility plan when we do those studies. We can't use the the impact fees for just anything within the city. We we have to by law expend those on certain. Certain projects. So for example, we can't pay police salaries with impact fees. That's not going to help us balance merit raises or. Addressing the other things that we need to to retain our staffing, pay for training, do all of those things. Impact fees cannot be used for that.
Thank you. Justin, do you have anything more that you'd like to add?
Yeah, just reiterating what Jenny said. The impact fee money is only a sho- short-term solution. To help pay for the pay for some of the bond. What what we have allocated is about. Uh a million dollars to the stormwater and and sewer fees. That can go back into the public works facility to impact fees. So really, I mean, it's a million dollars out of the six million dollars. So again, if we don't, if we don't address it now. We've we've really created this deficit over the last ten years. And as to to, you know, Steve's point, if we don't address this deficit now. And then from here on out, keep that certified tax rate. We're only going backwards. We're only creating the deficit to be worse. Five years down the road, ten years down the road. We 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 were asked, you know, can you do it? A little bit at a time? Well, yes, but it has to start here. We have to, we have to go right now. And sorry, it's a big bump. We understand it's tough. But if we don't do the big bump and then keep the certified tax rate year in and year out. And make minor incremental increases at that point, that's the only way we're gonna ever get ahead of the deficit.
Thank you. Brian, I guess I kind of interrupted you. Did you have anything? Any more questions or counsel? Anything else, Mark? Do you have anything more you want to add? I don't think I've heard you talk so much.
If we go to the point zero zero one five, we're talking, we'll still do truth and taxation again next year?
Well, it's it's hard to have a crystal ball, right?
Right.
We'll we'll evaluate what our budget is next year, depending on what we bring in through building. Everything, we'll look at that and determine what our needs are, but it won't be that much.
You would want to do truth and taxation every year? Just to keep the certified tax rate, because that tax rate is always going down.
I I understand that. I see that.
To hopefully not increase, yeah. It would be, it would be that one one five. If we went to the lesser rate, we would definitely have to do another one next year of an increase.
So here, I'm the new guy. Why wasn't our certified tax rate ever changed? I looked at it when you sent that slide up to me. It kept going down, down, down for what, seven, eight years? I'm curious what happened there.
So that.
In this, where we are now, we have to ask for such a big raise.
Yes, uh unfortunately, the the hard answer of that is that nobody wanted to go through truth and taxation to continue capturing that certified tax rate. And and that's where we're at. You, we can't capture it unless we do. And over this process, to kind of spin it in a positive direction. There are some advantages to going through truth and taxation. One of them being that you wrap up your fiscal budget before you adopt your final budget for the next year. You know exactly how much money you've spent in a typical budget year. We adopt our budget in June and we still have a month of expenditures that are coming through the pipeline before we have the the final numbers. And this way, i- if you go through truth and taxation, you you know exactly what the dollar amount is that you spent the previous month. And you're able to know where that certified tax rate needs to be. So to your point, Councilmember Christiansen, you could. Go through truth and taxation next year, but maybe you capture the certified tax rate, maybe revenue resources are looking a little bit different next year. Uh it's really hard for us to predict. And as we've predicted in the past couple of years. Not as well to to your point, Councilmember Loveland, we we probably needed to have done this uh years ago. In fact, we did need to do this many years ago. Not probably.
There is a reason we didn't do it the last two years. That was on the slide.
Okay, I I just, we had determined it was just bad advice.
Right.
And the, and you know, last week, no one wants to do that. No one wants to be sitting here. And honestly, uh we have a really good council right now that you think things through and you're, you're not afraid to make hard decisions.
And that was no was the case.
That was not always the case.
Yeah, to the to the mayor's defense. During her first term, she did not have a cor- coran that support her in that.
Amen.
Alright, so we're still publicists here tonight to hear that. So okay, Jenny, here's another question. Are there? Other entities that we pay taxes to, you know, on our property tax notice that do this taxation every year?
Yes, the school district is one of those that very frequently does truth and taxation every year. Uh North U Fire Department often does truth and taxation every year. Again, they typically don't have a lot of people attending their public hearings because. They're capturing the certified tax rate, so it doesn't go, it doesn't decline. So they're not necessarily increasing your taxes. But you're paying slightly more, even though you don't really notice it, because they're capturing the same amount of money so that it is. Increasing the revenue instead of just getting the same amount of revenue every year. It's going up little by little. And that's, when I was. Appointed the city recorder in twenty twelve, I went to a budgeting course and that was the best way that was recommended for cities to address it. Because it's the least painful for your residents, it's the least painful for the city to go through. It's easily explained and it's. Not a a huge hike. But to Justin's point, we're we're. We're putting a Band-Aid over a large wound if we don't do a a large hike to begin with. I think some council members in the twenty thirteen increase had the intentions of not letting it happen again and and here we are.
Okay, thank you. That really helps.
I think also we need to be looking in the future. One of the things I got off last week's meeting was, tell us what you want, okay? I think we need to be proactive. This tells me a lot right here that I'll bet you half way residents in Harrisville aren't paying attention by putting Harrisville down. On things that they buy online, on their vehicles. Everything else needs to have Harrisville, or that money doesn't count. That's proactive. We can tell events or keep public, this is not even helping us. And that was, that was asked. That was one of the things. And I do, I think we need to be proactive and saying, we will go through truth and taxation every year, because we have to recapture that. That's a given. Those are two things that public needs to know, needs to be in the newsletter. I know, you know, we'll put it on the website and things like that. But if we have to go around and hang door hangers, honestly, this is what we're doing if I were doing it. I think we are. Number three, I talked a little bit about how we can recruit money from residents within the city. I don't have a problem going to document or saying, let's buy some playground equipment, you don't have to do that. And it's not wrong. Doing any of that. So answering your question, Claire, I think there are things that we can be proactive with. We have to pass these taxes. For the public, but it's still, we use the burden. You just made the statement, I should have asked for more money. I understand that. You should have asked for more money because you don't know where your gasoline tax is going to. Or where your gas expenses are going to be this next year. Nobody does. But those type of things, I've heard through whims, so to speak, that. Oh, let's wait and build our buildings later. Let's hold off for two years because the cost of materials will happen. I think we can afford that. That's, that's, you know, as I said, I say it out there, that's aware. But you know, if that's given an explanation, why are everybody going back, not doing, going forward in the default? I mean, we see a lot of stalling involved in this city.
Yes.
Okay, so how do we get this information to the? All the residents of Harrisville, because they know, they don't know, get the newsletter. How, what is the way, I mean, how are we gonna do that so they know why this is like it is? Why, why is it so expensive? Why are we raising it so much this year? When it hasn't been raised for years and years and years? That's what people are asking, what happened? And how do we get that information to them? Because we're the ones with the target on our back, and I don't think it's us who caused the problem. And I'm okay with it on my back. I really am. But. We also need to let them know how this came about, so that they're willing to learn.
I had a conversation with a with a friend who lives in our area. And he's an old gentleman. He asked, okay, can you explain to him for five minutes?
We gotta get it to every single resident of the city, and I don't know how to do that.
Well, we were discussing earlier about our website and how we can, because not everyone gets a newsletter. So let's see if we can uh. Get them somehow registered on the website that we can. Mail that newsletter. Additionally, we can, we can do some things, we can be creative and reach out to people because a lot of people are saying they don't know this, even though it is available. We need to. Provide a way for them to see it, right?
How expensive would it be to mail something from the city? I mean, seriously, would it cost us ten thousand dollars? Would it cost us five thousand dollars in stamps? What in in printing? What would it cost us to mail something to every single castle?
What does it cost for a better newsletter? Because we piggyback on a lot of this to spell. It's around three, four hundred dollars. And that's for us to do our newsletter. That way, we've only reached that one of the American people or like the house in our households out of seventeen or so that we have. So Marie and I have been discussing this a lot, on trying to figure out how we can actually increase that. And do it correctly, so we're not violating any of these public rights.
The rest right now, the average citizen. They don't get involved at the point what they expect is when they back out onto the street on a snowy day, that those streets are clear. And when they call nine one one, they want a cop there yesterday that knows what they're doing. That's what the general John Q citizen expects. Then when they get hit with something like that, they're like. So so I I agree, education, education, probably.
So if we don't piggyback upon this, then?
So.
Less than a thousand dollars?
You got seventy nine people, fifty cents, that's going up to sixty cents a stamp. So after that.
Okay. It's not just one time. We just gotta do one man.
So cer- certainly, we can take an approach like that. Um the the challenge is that there's a a certain level of personal accountability that people have to take to be involved in it. And we can, we can challenge ourselves to try to. Plaster the notices in all of our locations. Certainly, state law requires us to to meet certain. Benchmarks with our noticing and we're fully transparent when people reach out, trying to give them the appropriate information. And we're absolutely willing to look into additional resources for us to educate the public. And to continue that process. But there has to be, to to Councilmember Jackson's point, there has to be a personal level of accountability that. They want to know, they are involved enough to know. And that we. We encourage them to to know. We're trying to use our resources with Facebook and the website to to help people sign up for the newsletter. Um with their email. A lot of people get their Bonavista la- la um notice electronically. They don't take it. Through the the mail anymore. A lot of people don't even check their mailboxes for weeks on end because they get everything electronically and they bill pay online. So we're, we're, we're in a transitional period generationally too, with trying to get the information out to those. And uh we're certainly willing to look at it as far as to the question earlier. Um why has it gone this long? That that's, I I think a gentleman at the public hearing last week said it the best, it that we were given bad advice. Uh and and now we're, we're trying to shift the sails and to your credit. Um I think one of the things that isn't said is that you're doing exactly what they wish that everybody had done in the past. But you're the ones with the target on your back, because this is exactly what needed to be done and needs to be done. And ironically, you're the ones that are doing it.
I I've got one other thing I'd like to say. You know, you guys are talking about getting, getting the city involved. All right, let's, let's look at it. We had how many people at the public hearing? And they were mad. All right, how many of those people will come back? And if we ask them, let's say, come back, we want to teach you what's going on. You help us. You help us to get the city to understand. And that's the problem is we've got to get the people that are willing to come back. And are willing to take the time. I'll take all the time we need. I'll be at every meeting if we want to do that. I'd be happy to do it, but we have to convince those people. That we're there and we need to sit them down and show them, this is the reason. Because that night, everybody was ticked off enough that they didn't care. We could have, we could have had solid clad information, which we did, but they're not going to see it. So now times of. It, the, everybody's had time to think. So what do we do? I I'm, like I said, I'm more than willing to sit there and to have open, you know, meetings that we can. Help the public understand. help the public understand and then have them teach other people and how to get involved, how to come to our meetings. I mean, the mayor said it at that meeting, that public hearing. You want to know what's going on, come to our meetings.
And I I think that's probably it is that uh you know, Councilmember Jackson said there's personal responsibility. If any one of those people that have been here that night, have been sitting in your seats, have listened to the same information you have for the last two years, they would probably be making the same decisions because you are informed, you know what you're up against. They unfortunately have to, you know, take it from, but just a small and buck information and we have more and yes, we need to get that information out there. We're, we're doing our best. We're always trying to reach them. But I know it's very helpful when you guys are publicly talking to your neighbors, just talking to people and and being there. Uh, Brian had the movie in the park the other night. I know uh Jenny was there, Mark was there. They had people that were willing to talk to them at the moment too. So maybe that's something that we always need to be informed of and we show up at those events and we're able to talk to people.
Even create the event, even have have a open house about uh that they can question, you know, if they have questions for the city. Let's see what happens, you know? I mean, hold an open house and people can come and they can ask us questions. I mean, we're not gonna be able, we can't give a doll. Anyway.
No, thank you. Uh, thank you, staff, for preparing all these things. Uh, thank you, council. We're being willing to meet again and and is there any work we need to discuss tonight? I don't, I don't want your positions. I don't want you to tell me what you're doing now. Uh, this is not a vote. Be discussing on that. There's no action taken tonight.
One thing I'm being asked is, hey, we sold public works, obviously. We bought it for building in the public works. It's first. They're asking, okay, how far down the road is the next phase? It's the next phase. And I've been telling them, telling them when it kind of becomes necessary or that funds are available. This building here, I don't, I mean, Jen Jenny hit on it, but the ADA downstairs, I remember our our toxilizer downstairs, we lead a drunk to the top of the stairs to go down a test and it's, it's a liability because I've had to catch it from below to the bottom. Administrative office of the courts came in and kind of cracked on the our security system here and 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 the debacle with the BCI. This people ask, well, why, why is it that the car going first? Because they're the obvious, obvious ones that are being impacted the most. And of course, my report is public works and so we need to start it first, but but the questions are, what are we adding in the next phase?
I guess that's.
So.
Is that's right for Jenny?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can touch on that because I think the comment was asked, or the question was asked last week at the public hearing. Uh, why are we doing these things now? Why is the city hall? Uh, or why are we talking about building the new city hall? Why don't we wait a year or two? Uh, but that is actually how long it takes us. If we, if we start the process now, we'll, we would be lucky to be building within two years to to relocate the city hall. Uh, we've already, we're, we're seven months into the process and almost eight months into the process with the public works building. And we will, we will meet our deadline for relocation out of its current current placement, but we, we certainly hope that the, everything goes along the construction timeline appropriately because if delays happen, then then we risk being there longer than we anticipated. So government is slow moving. It's, we have to do things um outside. We don't just have the luxury of calling up our local contractor and saying, hey, would you like to come build a new city hall for us? We have uh quite an extensive process that we have to go through. RFPs for architectural services, RFPs for con- contracting services, uh, going through the bond and we need to do some property acquisition and things like that to make that transition. So the chance or it will be several years and hopefully by then, building costs will stabilize and the market will change. But the reality is, it would have saved us money had we rebuilt our, or relocated our public work several years ago. Um, and we didn't. And so now the cost is doubled in what we anticipated spending there. So.
Hey. Okay, so how do we, we talked about like an open house or something? Because I know those people last, the people who were here last week wanted answers and we couldn't talk. So how do we set up an open house?
They could have.
What do we have to do?
I'd love to explain why he paid a hundred dollars for a formal. I have an explanation for everything I asked for and it's not enough. Still not enough money.
Yeah, we just had to sit there and be quiet. So, okay, so they're not here tonight. How do we get a message out? So here we have an open house.
Well, maybe they will. I I don't know if they will. They weren't here tonight when they knew that we had a work discussion. We will have another council meeting next week. Some of these things will be discussed before we take a vote then. They are willing to attend there. I know I have, I see one person that from the public online, they're willing to to spend time here to to learn. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Fair enough.
It is frustrating. It is frustrating to have so many people saying, why didn't you tell me? And then we have an open forum and they're not here. So I I really, I am willing, I know you all are willing to talk to your neighbor time open. I don't know. They need to invest sometimes. And I do appreciate, again, I I will always say, oh, which I appreciate having a council that's working together, having staff that's willing to have the table and work together and we're in multiple tasks at all times to get the job done for the city. We, that's another thing that that is probably not well known or we don't really want to ever publish our dirty laundry, but we've had some significant uh personality issues that we had to go through. Uh, I think I counted six turnovers of major players that we, we have gone through and and fixed and made things better for the city. It wasn't easy. It took a lot of time, but we are better on this side of it. So I think we have a staff, we're fully staffed with people who have a vision for moving the city forward, which has not been uh any more questions, any word special? This was the work session you guys wanted, so you were in control of this. Okay, okay, over. Katie?
I'm good.
Next.
Good.
Hey, Steve, you're good?
I'm good. Thank you. Thanks, staff, too.
All right.
Enjoy your vacation, Steve.
We'll see you next week.
All right. Well, since this is a work session, we're going to just have a motion for a turn.
The motion for a turn.
Okay, motion of second half favor.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.